For the pledge. Okay, good morning again. It's January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. We're gonna first start out with our ditch meeting, and you received those minutes in your packages from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? And if not, is there a motion to approve those said minutes?
So moved.
Motion, and there is a second. I'll let Tracy to figure out who seconded that. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are going to then go to our non-consent item, which is to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two-seven, setting a public hearing on February seventh, twenty twenty-three at nine a.m. to receive public comment on the findings and recommendations on the order initiating repair proceedings on county drainage ditch number ten. I see Chris Logue up there. Are you going to comment?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Just as a little review, in January twenty twenty-one, the Drainage Authority received a petition to investigate the condition of county ditch ten and to consider possible repair. On July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, we engaged with ISG Engineering to investigate the scope of repair and suggest repairs and alternatives. They submitted that report to us on September ninth, twenty twenty-two. We held a public meeting on October fourth, twenty twenty-two, which was not very well attended due to a few different factors, one of them being a lot of the farmers still being out in the fields. So we held an additional meeting on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, which was much better attended, and we received some very valuable feedback from the landowners who were in attendance as to what they considered some of the most important things along ditch ten that need to be repaired. ISG is going back and going to revise their final repair report to include that feedback from those landowners. And so today, we are asking that we can set another public hearing for February seventh at nine o'clock to review the amendment to the final repair report.
Okay. Is there any questions about that? And if not, is there a motion to adopt that resolution? There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will adjourn the ditch meeting and move into our regular Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting. And the first thing we have is number two is collaboration. We will work with our partners. And so this is a presentation of the Morris A. Miller Outstanding Service Award. Good morning.
All right. Good morning. I'm Amanda Samuelson. I'm the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for Scott County Public Health. Thank you for allowing me this time today to present the Morris A. Miller Award to Canterbury Park. Just a little background on the award. The award is named after the late Maurice Miller, who was a well-respected professional who worked in the EMS industry in Scott County in the metro area for many years. There are three different categories of the Morris Miller Award. The first is the Health Here Award. This is presented to individuals who have reacted spontaneously to life-threatening medical emergencies. Examples include individuals who perform CPR after a sudden cardiac arrest or someone who provides first aid after a severe traumatic accident. Next is the Distinguished Service Award, which is presented to individuals or organizations that have dedicated their careers or much of their personal time to working with emergency medical services. These would be your long-serving paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and other first responders. People like Maurice Miller. Finally is the Outstanding Service Award, which is presented to individuals or organizations that have made significant contributions to the health and safety of those in Scott County. This is the award that Canterbury Park will be presented with today. Throughout this pandemic, many different organizations step forward with offers to help. All these partners were vital in minimizing the spread of the virus and helping to protect the health and well-being of the people in Scott County. The most vital of these partnerships being with Canterbury Park. Canterbury Park was eager to assist from the beginning. Firstly, they allowed a public health team to conduct drive-through testing using their parking lot. The space allowed for orderly layout and expedited testing services, far above the capacity of other locations. The large amount of people serviced during testing operations ensured the population quickly and accurately knew their COVID-19 infection status. This knowledge armed the community and allowed them to take proper precaution and minimize the risk of spreading the virus to others. After the mass drive-through testing was complete, Canterbury Park jumped in to assist with hosting large-scale COVID vaccination clinics. Scott County conducted a total of forty-six vaccination clinics in a short six-month timeframe from Canterbury Park. Their location was ideal, allowing for ample parking as well as space on the vaccination floor for social distancing. At these clinics, volunteers and county staff were able to provide an amazing thirty-eight-thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-three vaccinations. Not only was the space perfect to meet the needs of the people of Scott County, but the staff was also instrumental in ensuring a smoothly operated clinic. Canterbury staff assisted with clinic setup, catered meals for individuals working, and provided a friendly face and moral encouragement during the almost one-hundred-and-fifty-one hours of vaccination clinic time. The actions of Canterbury Park and its staff displayed excellent dedication to the safety and well-being of the people of Scott County. It is with great pleasure and pride that the Morris A. Miller Outstanding Service Award is presented to Canterbury Park. The work conducted in partnership with Canterbury Park made a very real difference in saving lives in Scott County. The partnership with Canterbury Park was greatly appreciated by public health staff. When bad things happen, it is reassuring to have partners in the community who show such a willingness to help. Here to accept the award on behalf of Canterbury Park is the CEO and Chairman of Canterbury Park, Randy Sampson, and the Senior Manager of Events Services, Carrie Larson.
Lisa Brozki, Public Health Director. Just want to say a few words. I've never worked with a partnership like Canterbury before. Typically, when we get a space, we have the space, they open the door, and they're gone. I can't tell you how many times and how much it was appreciated to see Carrie come down, make sure everything was going okay, offered her staff to move stuff if it wasn't working, offered us different space, move stuff around. It was just unbelievable. It was an amazing partnership, not just a space. And it really made a difference for us. It relieved the pressure on what we were going to do, and they were just so very, very helpful. So I really want to thank them. I think someone has to read the proclamation. Or do you guys have to read that as well, or was that okay?
I don't have it.
You can read it, Lisa, yeah.
I think Amanda just sort of read all of our notes, so we have a lovely plaque for them for an Outstanding Service Award. And do you guys want to say anything?
I would like to make a quick comment, yeah.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'll be very brief here, but I do want to thank the Scott County for the recognition. And, you know, it has always been important to Canterbury to be active and helping the community. But the reason I wanted to get the microphone for a second is to recognize the people that really were the heroes and deserved the recognition, and that is the Scott County team. That, from Lisa on down, they were there day after day in the parking lot in the winter. You know, these people didn't sign up. That wasn't the job they signed up for. And, you know, I would go out there, I'd see Lisa, I think she maybe came out to shake hands and say hi. No, she was out there all day directing traffic, you know, all the staff. It was unbelievable. I mean, to have to do their own jobs as well as day after day, take turns running this operation. I mean, it wasn't just some volunteers there. It took a staff and an extremely professional and well-done operation, thirty-eight thousand vaccinations. Everybody should be very proud of that. And Canterbury was a small part of it when you compare it to your staff and the great job they did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to say Carrie did all the work. Now, I'm the guy that just shows up and shakes hands and says hi to people. Carrie's there every day.
We're out there working. Hey, we're gonna get a quick picture right up front here with everybody. Okay, with that, we're gonna move into amendments to the agenda, and I don't believe there were any amendments to the agenda that I saw. And you received your minutes in the package. I didn't see any additions, deletions, or corrections, but if any of you did, let me know. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve those minutes from January third?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of Interested Citizens. Limited to five minutes per person or subject, as long as it's not on the agenda. If you have something to say, come up to the podium and give us your name, address, and what's on your mind. I see somebody's coming up here. Thank you.
Hello? Commander Sterns, one-four-zero-six-zero Hidden View Road. I just see the current struggles I got with the Transformational House. I guess it's now coined Transformational House. It's a non-licensed, community-based correctional facility, or I guess as Damascus Way has put it, a transitional house to combat homelessness and recidivism among men exiting prison or simply following the contract to reentry in halfway house. It's a short-term transitional house for men exiting incarceration. With all these terms, it leaves many questions about what this is, what this isn't. Today, communication has been very inconsistent and contradictory. Research sent from the county has not been in support of this model. Everyone I talk with has kind of a different account of who will be in the home and how it will be run. Guess what I found is it's men coming out of incarceration, be their first very brief stop in the journey. Based off the numbers and conversations, it's a thirty-to-ninety-day program, maxing out at four months. So it'll send between twelve and forty-eight recently released males through a neighborhood in any given year. I think Shock could be at around twenty in a one-year period. So I hear this is community-based, and watching kids play and folks mowing the lawn is to be the trigger to keep these men from not recidivating. At forty-eight, there'd be eight-hundred-and-forty-six different folks through the neighborhood while a child is growing up. And using the Shocking numbers, that's still over three-hundred different folks before a child leaves the neighborhood. Be hard-pressed to find a home with twenty different residents plus a full-time staff, or between three-hundred and eight-hundred-and-fifty over an eighteen-year period. Choosing a community to raise children, one chooses one that doesn't allow short-term rentals, assuring neighbors will have a vested long-term interest. So I hear there's talk to make it a longer stay. I hear there should be a neighborhood committee. Question would be, will the neighborhood committee have the same voice they had throughout this process? Will there be any say as to who gets in, who gets out? So kind of from what I've gathered, programs kind of research off of Damascus Way, possibly the Doe Fund, which is the Ready, Willing, and Able Programs in New York. Those are all licensed homes, minimum of twenty-five beds, some over a hundred. Damascus is up to a one-year program at their licensed facilities. If our neighborhood's the correct setting, I believe the short-term is the wrong model. I did spend a couple hours at the Shockapi House. I will say it was a good experience. Todd, Damascus Way, they're doing a really good job with the short window. They get to work with the folks there. One of my concerns is what happens when Todd leaves. Now he's spread between two, possibly three homes. So let's remember, the goal is to transform someone from incarceration to functioning member of society. During this brief window, one is faced with getting to and from drug testing, getting a driver's license, getting to and from job interviews, getting to work once it's secured, while saving up enough money for first-last month's rent possibly, trying to secure housing after this. Any one of these would be a feat in the short duration, especially since one must walk over a mile to the bus stop or count on volunteers to get them to and from these different activities. The research provided by the county along with personal research shows that a larger home that can accommodate more people with an internal community and accountability has a higher success rate. Between these two homes, we're gonna cycle approximately thirty to fifty folks a year for a chance at success. I would say a small chance due to the short duration of stay. Wouldn't it make more sense to get a home that has a proven track record, like Damascus Way runs in Rochester and in Golden Valley, with twenty-five to thirty people with one-year stays? If we made a fifty-person or larger facility, we might actually be able to start helping these folks in the number that appears our county needs. Think about this. So the Doe Fund, during the first month, all they're doing is the commitment to change. They're learning to do, you know, just household chores. It's commitment to change. Our program's already trying to move them on to the next phase. Two-to-four month is reentry to the community with paid off-site work, because everyone wants to earn their own way. I'm sure our city, county could find some paid work for these folks. And then they get to go through some career building, and then they get to spend a few months trying to find and secure independence. With a program like that, they're having seventy-eight percent are keeping their job after six months. So I'm confused why the small, short-term model is what's chosen for our county neighborhoods. These would be four people at a time living in this home. The numbers needing assistance does not add up to the size of facility. I picture myself in those shoes, and it becomes a fancy hotel along my way. I think we should find a way to get the correct-sized place to have a better outcomes for the folks needing assistance. If these neighborhood homes are to be used, they should be long-term places for graduates that have secured, stable work in the community, are paying rent while climbing the economic ladder. This is the chance all folks want and deserve, but it has to be earned. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sterns. Is there anyone else who would like to come up for public comment? Anybody? Is there anybody online? Oh, Leslie, you have something?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to read three of them into the record. The first one was from Ms. Sterns on January sixth regarding the County Highway forty-two home. It was an email to Commissioner Beer. The second one is an email that Commissioner Brennan was forwarded on Friday, January thirteenth regarding the Transitional Home from a Bob Kelly. And then the third one is another email from Jennifer Sterns that went to the entire county board regarding the County Highway forty-two home on January sixth. Those will be entered into the record.
Okay. Thank you for that. So there is nobody else for public comment. We will close public comment then and go to six point one to receive information on Scott County topic delivers drug-free communities. Chris Harder, you have that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you very much for some time on your calendar this morning. We're here today with a group of county and community leaders to talk about efforts to prevent access to substances, particularly among our youth. And the focus of our conversation today really is around prevention. This same group was here about two years ago. We have some data from our Minnesota Student Survey and from our Resident Survey that reflects on this. And so we have a nice collection of folks that are gonna talk about our efforts to prevent access and to prevent the use of chemicals in our communities. So with that, I'll ask the folks on this side of the table to introduce themselves, then ask our panelists to just say who you are and what your role is, and then we'll get started with the questions. I do want to say, there is just a person or two that we're waiting for, so folks may join us. So Cindy, will you start?
You bet. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cindy Geis, and I'm the Community Services Director.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Schultz, and I'm the Enterprise Risk Manager.
Good morning. My name is Steve Jones, and I'm in the Office of Management and Budget.
I'm Mrs. Public Health Chair.
Sergeant Delajak from Scott County Sheriff's Office.
Pastor Karen Treat from Shelby Lloyd.
Nina Erickson, I'm the Data Planner in Public Health.
Carlson, I'm the...
So I would ask the folks on that side of the table, if you'll just hit the round buttons on your microphones to turn those on, please. Thank you.
And I just, I believe Towne R. Severson is almost on the call or will be on the call shortly.
Thank you. All right. Jennifer, will you want to start yourself?
Absolutely. Good morning. First of all, I just want to say, as I was reading through this packet, and just clearly the focus on prevention, thank you. It's tough work, and you guys are doing a great job. One of the things that stood out to me as I was reading through the introduction, and particularly around the comments about what's not working, I couldn't help but think a little bit about some of the new legislation that's gone through, particularly around the THC edibles. And so just kind of a broad question to anybody on the panel, I'm not really directing this at anyone in particular, but how does that really impact that legislation? How does that impact your work? And what are some steps that your group envisions kind of taking? And because I believe there probably is going to be some impact on the work that you're doing based on that legislation. So again, just kind of a broad question.
I can probably start the answer to that. I actually have had the opportunity to read the new three-hundred-page modification to the edible law, which was quite deficient previously. There are still quite many gaps in the legislation, particularly where no money is coming to the local counties. All the money is going to the state, but it's going, there's going to be a huge burden to the county and locals related to enforcement and response. One of our particular issues, education on edibles doesn't start for about three years in, so we're gonna roll out all these products into the community and not do any youth education. So it'll be a catch-up by them. Another big piece is they're gonna do some studies, but one of the things they did not include is poisonings of children, which we already are seeing an increase. And I actually brought some visuals today to show you part of our concerns. These are gummies, and this looks exactly like my Halls cough drops. Like, if I had them side by side, I couldn't tell the difference. This one here, and keep in mind, they're not supposed to be marketing to kids, but there's a little face thing on there. This looks almost exactly like those squeezy apple sauces. Hardly can tell the difference on that one. And then this one looks exactly like children's vitamins. Now, these are all being sold and are considered legal, all being sold right now throughout the state with very little enforcement. So enforcement is gonna fall on the locals. We went to a variety of different places that are, will be able to do, able to sell. There was no education for trainers. So it really is going to be, it's almost a free-for-all right now. We have a lot of concerns related to youth access and education. Do you want to add anything, Jamie?
I think one of the important things that we'll be focusing on, too, is just educating on the potency. It's not like the edibles or the weed that was back in the nineties that we have available now. These potency limits are way higher than what they were, and the majority of people don't know that. So a lot of education to the community, locking up those edibles, any kind of substances that they have available in their home, making sure their kids don't get a hold of those products will be very important as well.
Thank you.
One of the things that law enforcement's often faced with is that when new products come to the field, it's just gonna increase the likelihood that someone else is gonna get it that shouldn't have access to it. So if you take the problem that we have with alcohol and alcohol compliance, we've just doubled that because we now have another product that is viewed by many to be similar to alcohol. But just like alcohol, we know that it has severe ramifications for children or people that should not take those certain substances. So one of the things that the sheriff's office is always looking at is opportunities to network with other resources that might be able to provide another tool for our tool belt, if you will. And one way of doing that is working through public health. One thing that our sheriff administration has worked quite strongly on each year is that there are two or three months at the beginning of each year where the sheriff office is broken up into two teams where they're able to have training. And one week, Team A is being trained, next week, Team B is being trained. And this is where public health can come in and talk with us, so that we're starting to network. We have an understanding of what the problem is, and we can come together for a solution and then act upon that. Education is key, but we know that ever since I've been in high school, which is now a long time, alcohol issues are not gonna go away. So this is gonna compound it, but we do the best that we can based on the resources that we have, in line with our authority, and we simply move forward.
One other thing I want to add is, you have to be twenty-one to purchase these products, but that was the same that happened with vaping, and we know how well that worked. We did, when we did go around at stores, we did go to one of the stores, Jordan Store, actually, that's already set up. They're very, they don't want to sell to minors. They also want a way to work with the county to provide that education to identify those gaps, and they're very happy to provide us some education and information that they think where we can partner together to keep it out of the hands of kids. So it really isn't an adversarial relationship that we've discovered so far, and we are looking forward to working with the distributors and the marketing so people can't, don't have access, and it's safe for kids. The other piece that is also a public health issue falls under the nuisance law, but I was very happy to see that they added in there that people are not allowed to cook at home because you use solvents that tend to blow up. And we appreciate people not blowing up their homes in the county, so.
Thank you.
Going along the similar lines here, if I could go to page seven. This, I find this interesting. I could see where marijuana, this is the youth who perceive substance use as moderately or greatly risky. And due to that discussion with legalizing of some of the THC products, I can see where that perception has gone down. Be right or wrong on that one. The one that really scared me looking at this, though, is the prescription drugs. I was really shocked to see the change from nineteen to twenty-two, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. What do you have as part of your plan for preventing this going forward or trying to educate, I'm thinking, on this end?
Do you want to speak to that, or?
Sure. I think really it starts with the parents and what they're allowing in their homes and what they're storing in their household. If kids, their kids are seeing them use these substances, not locking them up, not taking them to the drop boxes or just throwing them down the drain, I think that just gives, sends a message that it's okay for you to take these kinds of substances. So really, it's educating our parents on making sure they're locking up those substances. And then that really contributes to perception, youth perception. Yeah.
We also have, on the flip side, the variety of different efforts to get the drugs out of the community. There's a lot of prescription medications in our community, and we're, this, what we're focused here on for the Drug Free Communities is access. So where are youth gonna be able to access these? And often, kids start with prescription medication. That might be happening to be at their grandmother's house or in their medicine cabinet. So working on the ticket to the box, get rid of those old medications. We also distributed a couple of thousand of those Detera bags, and those are ways that you can safely deactivate medication prior to throwing it in the garbage, so you're not flushing it down the toilet and getting into the environment. We also had a lock-it-up billboard that really educates parents, keep everything locked up, alcohol, drugs, prescription medications. So, and I think, I think overall, there's been a lot more awareness about like the dangers of fentanyl and recognizing the difference between fentanyl and how one pill can kill, and that was another one of our billboards. So trying to increase education to parents, we just purchased a couple thousand parent education handbooks and are getting those out in the community right now in partnership with the school district as well. I brought one here, if you want to take a look. We do have samples.
Great.
Yeah.
So my question kind of goes along with the what's not working well, denial by community members that youth substance is a problem. And when I look on page 14, it talks about parents who turn a blind eye that there really is an issue. So a lot of what you were talking about so far has a common theme, whereas if parents don't consider these either problems that they're not locked up, or if kids view their parents as, you take them, I can take them, and particularly when it comes to, it comes to what the enactment of what we will probably see happen this year with marijuana and the use of that being now legalized in the state of Minnesota. How do you plan, or how, what is your true momentum seems to be starting with those parents? That if parents don't think that this is an issue, why would the children hear that message loud and clear? They're seeming not to hear that. So what's, what's the actual item that you have to really get out to not just like a handbook, but like a community event or some type of educational, educational program within all of the schools?
Yeah, I can start. So one of the big parts of Drug Free Communities grant is working with a coalition. So we have our Scott County Prevention Coalition that meets every other month, and it consists of 12 different sectors and more throughout our community. And these are all community leaders like Karen, and from the schools, from faith, from law enforcement, and we all meet, and we have an action plan that kind of guides our work. So really, it's breaking those silos and bringing everyone together at the table and making sure they're informed of these issues in our community, and then really giving them the knowledge to take that back to their organizations and educate parents and families in their communities. So I think the coalition really builds upon our work and drives it forward. I don't know, Karen, if you want to say more?
Well, I'll have to speak to you as a faith community leader. This, this is a time where faith communities can participate in prevention and support of those who are suffering from substance use disorder and to help prevent and help parents in this time. So we at Shepherd Lake have a mental health and addiction team who are, we're just sort of getting our footing on getting in front of people. Some monthly, we've been offering opportunities for our community to come together and talk about those issues. We did have a naloxone training in this fall. This, this January, we're having someone come speak on her addiction and recovery and her way of how she speaks out to help people, and also someone from Luther Seminary to speak on pastoral care to walk alongside people. But we need to also really work with our CYF team, and we have the gift of having a CYF team that can help and speak to our parents about this. I don't think it should just be a school, just come from our schools. I think it needs to come from our faith communities. And it's really, even if you're a small church, can have a leader just speak on it or have these, having like that rental available at church. So that's what we're doing. And I guess I, I think if we were to do anything, it's to gather the leaders, other faith community leaders to hear about this and how it is that they can help in this area.
I am interested, have you approached any of the other faith communities, knowing that this is something you're just starting? Or are you waiting to see what type of momentum and success you have and bring others along for those, particularly those faith communities that haven't even thought about standing up such a program like you?
I haven't yet gathered, and that's really, this is kind of helping me to move that, you know, I think COVID just sort of paralyzed everybody in their own communities. So it's kind of moving out, and so this is really helpful, because I do truly believe faith communities can make a difference in this effort.
We have engaged, have Ibrahim Mohammed from the Muslim community is on our coalition as well, so we have some additional efforts going on. But Cindy, you hit the nail on the head. We need that parent buy-in. And one of the things that we heard during COVID is that parents were at home using side by side with their kids. Now, that's a very difficult phenomenon to intervene. So unless we get parents on board, it's very difficult to get the kids buy-in as well. The other piece I wanted to point out, if you look on page 11, we have our Community Readiness to Change survey. And back in 2017, we were in a community where we didn't talk about the substance use of the community. We are, this is an alcohol-friendly, tobacco-friendly community, and marijuana, those are pretty much our drugs, were our drugs of choice in 2017, and don't touch our alcohol was the issue. We did some education and went from it not being mentioned on the resident survey to being one of the top health issues, that people were starting to take ownership of those issues, particularly when it comes to youth. We went from a 1.5, which was in the denial range, to back in 2020 to where we have a vague awareness. We do plan to redo this survey this year. I do anticipate that we'll see much more awareness, particularly in relationship to all of the media out there related to the dangers of opioids and overdoses. We've had several overdoses in our community. So I think that that unfortunately has raised and elevated the issue to a higher level. Now, we are primary prevention, you know, focusing on marijuana. It is not, you know, it's not opioids, but if you talk, Dr. Wilcox often talks about the people he sees in the jail getting on medicated assistive therapy for opioids. He asks them what their first drug was, what their entryway drug was, and every single time, they say marijuana. So this is why we need to get in front of it, get that, reduce that access, ensure that kids aren't using, get the parents on board.
Can we further discuss the slide since we're on this one? So we're currently at 2.89 would be the highest with community ownership. What really is your goal? Is your goal to get to level nine? And what type of timeframe are you looking to achieve?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. Change in the community is very slow. I do not anticipate that our next number is going to be nine. And it's not just public health, it's not just the county. Again, you've heard that it's really a lot of those partners at the table. It has to be embedded, deeply embedded into the community. It has to be a paradigm shift. So yes, overall, that would be great. We're at a nine. That means that everybody realizes this is a problem, and no one's supporting youth access, and we don't have, you know, John Smith at the liquor store buying alcohol for youth, and those things happen. So the goal is to get as close to a level nine as possible. That could take 10 years. So any incremental, any change in the upward direction is a positive change.
I'll just say, this is a five-year grant, so it will end in 2024, but we do have the opportunity to apply for another five years of funding. So that's, that's a good opportunity for us in Scott County.
Can any of you talk a little bit about the involvement in schools? Obviously, you know, Jamie, you said that you have provided information and to give out, but do we know what the schools are really doing with youth? One of the things that stuck out to me a little bit, and again, maybe this can be addressed too, is at least two of our districts didn't participate in the data in the past couple of years. And any thoughts about that? Is that why that is? So kind of a couple twofolds, just a little bit about school involvement and then that, those districts that aren't participating at this point.
Yeah, I don't want to speak to why the schools didn't participate. There are some incentives for the schools. They do get ownership of their own data. So they do get, you know, record of, of their findings. We, we have to make a request to the state to get anything that would have a district identifier on it, so that is relatively protected data for the schools. Our policy is never to do anything without the district's permission. And in the past, district sharing has required a superintendent, a letter of support from the superintendent for even us to get a copy of the districts in our county. I want to just add one more thing on the data here, that I did go back and pull all the data from the schools that aren't in it this year, so that the samples from 16 and 19 are the same schools that you see. We have it for all five schools when they participated, but what you're seeing in front of you is just the data for Shockley, Pirate Lake, Savage, and Bellplane, right?
And there wasn't a lot of difference once we pulled out that data. So I just want to add, they might not be participating in the student survey, which is unfortunate and is a wealth of data for us, but they are very actively involved in chemical health programs, and we work closely with them on providing services in the schools.
Can you talk a little bit about those services, Lisa, what you guys are doing in the schools?
I also have Tamara Severson on the phone. I don't know if she wants, I was just texting her to see if she wanted to talk. Tamara, did you have anything to add about what you're doing in the schools? I'm not sure if we lost her. We may have lost her. Go ahead.
Well, I can talk about, it's, so Drug Free Communities is really about providing youth prevention, not necessarily services. But we do communicate with the chemical health specialists and like the school resource officers within the schools. I keep them up to date on what's happening as far as youth substance use and what we're seeing. And like I mentioned in the packet, school staff, they have really limited time to work on drug prevention. So any support or technical assistance that I can provide to them, I am, they know that I am here to help them and support them in any way I can as far as prevention activities go. But some of the things that we have done is engage with the CAPS program with Shockley High School and Pirate Lake High School, and that's the Center for Advanced Professional Studies. So they, I usually get a group of students in the fall and the spring, and they work on different substance use prevention activities. And really, it provides an opportunity for them to talk to their peers about the health effects, risky behaviors, why they choose not to use, what services are available within their school, who they can talk to for peer support, things like that. So they've done like National Drug and Alcohol Facts Week in their schools. They've gone to like basketball games and educated parents that way. They've handed out different like small incentives to, and like I said, it just provides an opportunity to talk about the issues in their schools and let them know this is, this is a problem.
Bellplane is also very involved with like Dr. Raditz and a chemical health project in the schools. And Jordan also has a variety of different awareness pieces for their chemical health specialists.
So there are a couple pieces of the data that were, seemed a little bit conflicted for me. So if you look on page six, that looks at the percent of kids who report using within the last 30 days. And generally, except for vaping, those, those trends appear to go down, right? Like that looks really positive. When I looked then at some of the, both the tobacco compliance check or the tobacco educate, what is it, 70, congratulate and educate, and the tobacco law enforcement compliance checks, those, the percentage of passes is going down. And so I wonder what you think about that. If kids, kids are reporting less use within the last 30 days or less frequent use with, fewer kids, a smaller percentage of kids are reporting use within the last 30 days, but your sellers are passing those checks less frequently. And what does that mean for your work going forward?
I can comment to some of that. The sheriff's office has a program where we do do compliance, and we network with the state, and we're starting to network more with the county. But one of the biggest things that we probably need to focus on as professionals is exactly what Carlson said, and that is breaking down the silos. We're very good staying within our own lane and doing our own job, but sometimes we fail to branch out and share certain data or certain information. And a lot of times, because we build such strong silos, we believe that we're inhibited to act in a certain way because of policy or procedures, when it really just comes down to, well, this is just the way we've always done it. And once we realize that and we can break down those barriers, we can come together with more effort. Now, certain compliance checks, there has been some failures this past year that we haven't seen, but it was directly related to the training that that particular establishment may have given or may not have given. And so the sheriff's office has stepped up to provide free an opportunity to be trained. So we have server training, and then we also have compliance checks, which also have an element of training. And so let me explain that real quickly. When you have an establishment that is, have service for tobacco sales or alcohol sales, they can come to one of our sessions. We can train them to make sure that they know what the law is and how to ensure that they're selling to the right person. Now, if we go and do a compliance check and they fail, instead of writing a citation and walking away, if that worked, we'd have no speeders in the world. So what the sheriff's office has done is networked with the attorney's office in a very positive way. And what that positive direction is, is hey, you failed. Let's get your name. This is my name. Here's the report number. This information is going to be referred up to the attorney's office. And then what we do is we network with the attorney's office to get this person into one of our training courses. We then provide that training to that person, give them the building blocks that they don't have, and in fact, invite maybe their business owner or their managers to come along to that training. And once that training is completed, we take that case and, for lack of a better term, we trashcan it. This past year, we had a person who was greatly affected emotionally because they had failed the check. They were a young server. They were trying to do the right thing. They got the numbers mixed up. And in the past, put a citation, walk away. What have we done? We haven't done anything. She went through, or he went through a course and responded back with an email thanking us for what difference that made for her just emotionally. That's the way we're going to move forward. That's what we as a sheriff office is trying to do. That's what we're trying to do as an attorney's office. And quite frankly, that's what we're all talking about right here, right now. We just have to break down those silos and move together. If I could add one more thing to answer your question for Jennifer, and that is, there is a school district that has invited the sheriff's office to come and give one portion of their driver's instruction classes. So what you do there is instead of giving it all to the sheriff's office where a big bad guy comes in with a badge, no matter how good-looking I am, I'm not going to get everybody to buy into my philosophy. But if the course is set up with a teacher that they already trust or a counselor that they already trust, that builds a little bit momentum. And then if I just am given one section of that, I have an opportunity to make an impact. And I had this opportunity this past year to go and substitute for the sheriff who was out of town. And some people know me from the community because of my family's businesses, because of my children. And so I was able to relate to them. Then I brought some data, some facts, but this was the big positive thing. The school offered extra credit to the child if their parent attended. So you're thinking about the fact of how you're going to change to a nine? It is probably going to take quite a few years, because you're actually trying to change a generation of philosophy. And it is interesting that after these courses are done, what children will tell you about their own home environment. Nothing is going to compensate for failure in the home. Let's not focus on the failure. Let's focus on how we can break down those silos and bring a building piece to give a child or even a parent a different thought process when it comes to these items.
The other thing I wanted to add is, if you notice on the congratulate and educate checks, and just to clarify, that's what public health does, and we go with a minor who looks very young, and we do not do enforcement. It's education only. And we, this year, we did see more fails than we've ever had before, but keep in mind, we didn't do it for the previous two years. So there has been a gap in those reminders. So the law enforcement goes out, and about six months later, we'll go in. When they pass, we give them a thank you for not selling, a pat on the back. It's nice and warm and fuzzy. If they fail, we provide education. So it's another opportunity to go out to touch that entity or that server, and we hand them some information about what the law says and where to get more resources. So it really is just a reminder check, and it was very unfortunate that we had so many fails. And I do believe that part of that had to fails. And I do believe that part of that had to do with COVID.
How's that received, Lisa, when you do that? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Overall, it's, it's really been very positive, especially the ones when they pass. They really like those. Jamie does them, did them recently. I don't know if you want to talk about how the fails have been received.
Well, we did education to retailers on THC moratoriums in the cities that had passed a moratorium. And I guess the ones who had failed didn't really know about any of the laws, were really confused about the city's moratorium. So that just goes to show you how important this education is and just really that partnership with the retailers. And then also, I did want to point out in, on August 1st, 2020, Minnesota passed a law raising the age to purchase tobacco products from 18 to 21. So right in COVID, when we weren't doing the checks, is when we passed that big law. So again, just providing the education and making sure retailers know how to check IDs and what to look for is really important.
I think overall, they're happy that we're not, they're not getting a fine, right? Like we're not law enforcement, nothing personal. Not law enforcement. And we really do it in a very cooperative manner. And we often, if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out. So it's been, it's been positive.
That's great.
One of the challenges we talk about all the time in these SCOT delivers is how tough it is if your program is geared primarily to prevention, to be able to measure impact, right? To measure what didn't happen or to measure whether your program is making the difference that you want it to make. And so when you look at this packet of data, are there, are there one or two pieces that are most important to your coalition or to your internal team that says like, this, this is really our strongest evidence that our work is making a difference?
Well, for the DFC grant, we are required to report on four core measures, which is in the packet. And that's on youth use and then perception of peer and parent disapproval, and then perception of how risky they think the substance is. So really, we do take that into consideration when we're looking at our action plan and planning for the next year. I would say those are four really important measures. Lisa, did you have?
I think all the data is key. And we have a lot more that we can bring to the table.
I know you do. I know you do.
You know, it always is tricky what is, and I forgot to bring for Commissioner Beer, the return on investment in primary prevention strategy, but I will get that to you later right after. I think one thing that's really positive, I think the amount of drugs that have been turned in, pounds of drugs collected in the drop boxes has increased over time. I think that shows that people are taking this seriously, that they should not have these medications in their, in the community. And even more so, in 2021 and 2022, we distributed another way of getting rid of drugs that aren't being counted because we sent out a couple thousand of these Detera bags. So in addition to them doing this, they're also doing that. So I think that that is, shows that people are hearing the message and understanding. I mean, it's one thing to hear the message. It's how you move from the message to action. And how do you measure that? It's always tricky, but, sorry. And it's not just those primary prevention. I think you've seen this graphic before. There's so many different layers in this, that like the bottom line is at this very end, we want to save lives, right? And how, what are the multiple different steps that the county, the faith-based, the hospital, the community-based entities need to, to take in order to get to that point of saving lives? We have a lot of partners at the table, and I think that that's key. And that is a good measure for us as well, is how many partners do we have that are participating in this? It's not just public health. It's, and the more partners at the table, the more we can get this widespread message. People have to hear the same prevention message six to 10 times to make a difference. So.
If I, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, speaking of partners, it looks like Lisa couldn't be here unless she's online. So maybe I can direct a question to Ron if he's willing. The graph 19 talks about the choose not to use government. It's been around ever since I've been here at Scott County. And clearly, if you look at that graph, the number of volunteers and participants, as well as substantially the fundraising that has risen over the last, it looks like about 15 years. And so I just was hoping maybe somebody, again, Ron, it looks like if you, could talk a little bit about how you use those fundraise, those dollars, and how those impact some of the work that's being done for drug-free communities.
Certainly. In the past, we had a curriculum to, of numerous schools throughout Scott County where we provided the curriculum directly to the, to the schools free of charge, where they would teach the curriculum that we presented to them. And it was a curriculum that was approved by Harvard to keep, to educate kids on drugs and hopefully make, help keep them making right choices in life. Now, just this year, we're starting a new program with, again, a new curriculum. If any of you are familiar with Chris Heron, he's a former professional basketball player who went through some very severe and hard times. And he has a, he has a program out there with the curriculum to, again, teach kids. So starting this spring, I think we're starting in Jordan, I think it is, that Chris Heron actually comes in and will give a presentation to the kids at an assembly. It's a very powerful presentation. We've seen it and reviewed all this, reviewed all the information so far. And then before they, before his presentation, they actually do the curriculum in the classroom. And we're also hoping, and we're planning on having a evening program also for parents. And the Heron Foundation said it's best to have those separately because they don't want parents in the same assembly as the kids because it could, it would make the kids less willing to talk about any situations that they might have. So we're hopefully going to have a community education in the evening plus for the students during the day. And we're starting, we're starting that this spring again in Jordan. We're also doing more partnerships with public health recently with billboards around the county to, again, hopefully educate parents and kids on the drop boxes, on the edibles, and how to keep them separate and just, again, keep, to try to make kids make the best choices in life.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, no, if you haven't heard, the fundraiser, you mentioned the fundraiser. This year, we are moving the fundraiser to Legends Golf Course. And we're looking forward to a new partnership with Legends and again with the new partnership with the Heron Foundation.
I'm going to invite last question before we turn it back to the commissioners.
My question kind of, it's not included in this data here, but of the kids who choose to use, how many of them are tied to either overdose or suicide? How, do you have any correlation between suicide teen, suicide death, and the use of either drug or alcohol?
I could look, once we get the data. We have very, very sparse data from the Minnesota Student Survey so far. I would be suicidal ideation and not, you know, something that reached a clinical level of attempt or something. But we do have student self-reports in the Minnesota Student Survey that we could look for a correlation between use and suicidal ideation.
I think you should also speak to the harm reduction that's being a part of the effort. I think, I'll speak from my own personal experience. I have a husband in long-term recovery over 30 years. Our household spoke about addiction their whole lifetime, and it didn't stop them. And a pretty functional home, didn't stop them from using when it was illegal. And so how do you then instead, in turn, talk about harm reduction? Because they're going to use anyway. So I think that using Narcan, having Narcan be part of a conversation, you know, if you're going to take a pill, know where that pill is coming from, or that you have Narcan in this built in your house. So I think you have some of those efforts going.
Yeah, upcoming with the opioid work plan, there's going to be a big push to get more naloxone in the community for everyone to use, parents, families, schools. We've done some training for naloxone at schools and artists, some community-based organizations. And Jamie can tell you all the different ones we've done that, to get more naloxone in the community. We are doing something right now with the jail where everyone who is being discharged is getting naloxone and fentanyl strips so they can test to see if it is fentanyl. So it really is moving towards, if they are going to use, how can they use it safer? So if they do accidentally OD, is there life-saving medication that will bring them back? And different ways ensuring that they're using safely so they're not spreading additional disease in our community as well. So from the youth perspective, we are teaching youth how to use naloxone in case one of their friends or their parents or they're an adult has used and has OD'd. Want to talk about any other?
I also want to say, so Tamara has helped funded putting Change to Chill program within schools, and that addresses mental health and really how to cope with like mental health stressors that they're experiencing in schools and in their daily life versus turning to substances. So really looking upstream at those protective factors and how we can work with the students and really support them in their daily life instead of turning to substances.
I think that's one of the things we're doing at Shepherd is, is to do the emotional, spiritual part of, you know, where do you turn in these times, better strategies instead of going to drugs and alcohol.
And the hospitals on board also, we are working with them to also duplicate that anyone who does come in for substance use-related OD, that they're going to be automatically giving out naloxone and fentanyl strips. And we've begun discussion related to a safe syringe program. So just a variety of different things, areas that are aligned, basically giving the same message and providing different opportunities.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the microphone back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's questions or comments, but I guess I'm wondering how your work will change in the environment we're in, where marijuana is likely to be legalized in our state. You know, I walked into a major big box store the other day and it said, if you use drugs, don't even bother applying because we test for drugs. And this company is one we all recognize with the orange colors and.
[laughter]
And they, they're a company that's probably across the nation. And I guess I'm wondering, you know, there's federal laws, you know, and there's state laws. Apparently marijuana is still illegal federally, and I wonder how a company even navigates in this environment where they have trucking and they have business across states and they, their stores are across states and their employment patterns are, you know, if you're rising the company, you're going to be shifted across states. I mean, it's, it seems like a whole different environment we're entering in. And, you know, in Colorado, they just closed two libraries because they had to decontaminate them from meth in the bathrooms. And in Colorado, now Schedule One, there's a list of Schedule One drugs that are the hard ones, cocaine, heroin, and so forth, that now if you have, I think it's four grams or less, it's a misdemeanor, which is like, you know. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, I just lay out a few things like that. How is your work going to change in this different environment?
I could say we're going to be a whole lot busier. I think, you know, employment is not really our realm, but I think at that orange store, they can test if they're using heavy equipment. But I think overall, and I would have to, I don't know if Lori has this here, I mean, it's definitely something that our county is going to have to figure out related to testing because I don't believe we'll be able to continue to test for marijuana, although I'm not sure that's affirmed. Because you could use it two weeks ago and you could still test positive, but are you really under the influence? So there's a lot to be figured out on that level. You know, the Drug Free Communities program is very, we're not anti-marijuana because I would agree with you 100%. In the next couple of years, it's going to be legal across the board in the state. That's where we're headed. But we are youth access. We're really focused on youth. And we want to make sure that kids aren't, because it's, it's an adult product. The same with alcohol. We don't, we're not anti-alcohol. We just want to make sure that youth are making good decisions. And adults also aren't drinking and driving and things like that. So really, we'll do more focused efforts related to marijuana. But as you can see, even in that chart with youth perception, the drop in use two times a week has dramatically dropped. So that message is already out there. It wasn't even legal yet when they took the survey, and they're already thinking. I mean, it gives that impression that it's a safe product because it's legal now once you turn 21. And so we need to do more messaging, more education about the developing brain and what marijuana could do to the brain while still developing. There's a lot to be done in that respect. And the statute does include information about messaging to pregnant moms and messaging to youth. There's just not a lot of dollars for local public health yet in there. So it does, it's an unfunded, yet another unfunded mandate. And we will see the trickle effect. We will definitely see the trickle down related to increased use, increased poisonings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's, it's, it's a floodgate of what could happen. So we're hoping to get in front of it and start messaging now and getting that education on board and working to make sure that youth just don't have access. I think another giant burden is going to fall on law enforcement. And if you want to speak to those.
I guess that's a segue for me.
That is.
Like I said before, basically what you're saying is, is we already have products out there that we're concerned about, that have been legal for eons of years. We're now adding another product, and so your ratios are just going to go up of who's going to be using and who has accesses to it. From a law enforcement standpoint, we're law enforcement. I can't go out and enact a law that is the law of Devojoc. I can't. We're mandated to follow the law. So as the law changes and we see the ramifications from that law that might be negative, is why we're sitting here talking about it today. And so, do we have a magic wand that's going to make this go away? No. You gave an example of another state, okay? Researchers knew before those laws were passed what was going to happen. They knew it. People in this state know it. I think it's going to come down to more of the smaller communities, counties and such, that come up with ideas that work, that might be able to show the best way forward. And the only way we can do that is having these meetings, breaking down these silos and saying, this is what works good for our community. And we come together as a team and we follow the law and we intervene where we can. But it's not going to be easy. It's not easy now, but we don't get, need to get negative about it. We just need to be positive.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Brennan?
I am, I have a question and I have a comment. My question is regarding the people in our community that are not usually represented. Being out in the community recently, I talked to different Somali group or the Latin group, Latino group. And there was a concern with the Somali group about the parents of children in denial that their children were actually using drugs. So are you working at all with those communities to hear what they have to say?
Yeah. So we have engaged with Advocates for Thriving Communities right here in Shakopee to provide an naloxone training and do some education to moms on opioids. And so we hope to continue that relationship. We've done some education with Esperanza as well, which is Latinx, some of the Latinx community within Scott County. So just continuing those partnerships, I think is really important. Do you want to talk about the community presentations, conversations?
Oh, actually, yeah. We recently wrote a health equity grant that engaged both the Somali and the Latinx community for substance use. One of the targets is to reduce denial and lack of awareness in the Somali community. And we are working with Sarah O'Dow, who's now an employee of ours, who was, who started Advocates for Thriving Communities. And part of that, within that, we have included conducting community conversations with with the faith leaders in that community to help them get on board. And so they're saying the same message. For this grant, the Latinx target was really the mental health and suicide prevention because there has been quite a bit of those issues in that community and that was the priority for them at this time. But we will also be including community conversations with them as well. We do have a current effort going on in the Latinx community where they are bringing up, are including topics in small group discussions and a couple of large group discussions related to opioids and substance abuse prevention. So we have been working with those communities and we have several representatives on our coalition that are part of those, of the BIPOC population.
Okay, thank you. I do have one other comment. I was recently on the Shakopee City Council and we passed the vaping ordinance for flavored vaping. And we also passed the THC ordinance. And when I was making those decisions, I had more calls regarding flavored vaping from the national organizations to vote against flavored vaping. And then very few calls regarding people who are against the sale of THC products. So when you're talking about the, on the charts, the perception of those substances, I think that's very real. I mean, if we're making policies based on information that we're getting, you know, it's very difficult to get a clear, clear view of what it is. So I don't know, I don't have a question regarding that. It's just an observation that I have. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. With that, thank you very much. Very nice. So, yeah, thank you for being on the panel. With that, we are going, yes. Okay. We are going to move into consent then. These items normally pass in one motion and are deemed non-controversial. So today we have 11 of them. 7.1 is to adopt Resolution Number 2023-10 approving rezoned preliminary plant and final plant of Johnson Estates consisting of two lots on 10.5 acres in Section 28 of Spring Lake Township. 7.2 adopt Resolution Number 2023-15 authorizing a master agreement with Luffler Companies Incorporated and Attachment 1 to that agreement. 7.3 adopt Resolution Number 2023-16 authorizing an agreement with Kara Soft Technology Corporation. 7.4 adopt Resolution Number 2023-17 authorizing a master agreement with Robert Half International Inc. and Attachment 1 to that agreement. 7.5 adopt Resolution Number 2023-19 authorizing a budget amendment and a fourth contract increase for the county Highway 27 expansion project. 7.6 adopt Resolution Number 2023-20 authorizing an agreement with CDW Government LLC. 7.7 adopt Resolution Number 2023-21 authorizing a master agreement with New Rocket LLC and Attachment 1 to that agreement and a budget amendment to the capital improvement program. 7.8 adopt Resolution Number 2023-26 authorizing final payment to Sir Lines a lot for the 2022 annual pavement marking and striping contract. 7.9 adopt Resolution Number 2023-28 approving estimates of just compensation for right of way for the trunk Highway 169 at Bluff Drive overpass project. 7.10 approve payroll processing of personnel actions. 7.11 approve record of disbursements and approve claims. That is our 11 items on consent. Are there any you would like to have pulled for a separate vote or for discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
There's a motion to approve those 11 items. Is there a second? Okay. There's a second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So did you want to recess now, did you say? Okay. We're going to recess for five minutes and we're going to reconfigure the room and then we were going to celebrate the retiree Pam Selvig. So they're turning it on something. There it goes. We're going to reconvene the Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 17th, 2023. And we were going to, we're going to go into 8.1, recognition of Scott County retiree Pam Selvig. I'm kidding. We all know Pam. Leslie Vermillion is going to kick this off. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's days like this that are kind of bittersweet when you've worked with so many of this long and they've done so much for public service and yet are very deserving of being able to retire and move on. And so I'm going to do my best. So Pam Selvig began her long career of helping our most vulnerable with a bachelor's degree in social work from the University of Wisconsin-O'Clare. She then became much smarter and decided to get her master's degree on the heels of that from the University of Minnesota. Go Gophers. Her first job was at HHH Job Corps Center in St. Paul where she developed and coordinated educational programs for minor parents and provided educational sessions for adolescents and young adults. Pam then moved to Anoka County and into public service as a social worker and provided case management services to children, adolescents and families in the areas of child protection and child welfare. You're going to hear this term "child" over and over throughout her career. This meant collaborating with schools, mental health providers and other community service agencies to address client needs. Pam next became the Director of Treatment at Family Alternatives in Minneapolis. Here she continued to develop her leadership skills as she worked on policies and training for foster parents to meet the needs of emotionally disturbed young people in placement, ensure licensing was consistent with state rules and again, the best interests of children, the licensed foster families and providing placement supervision. Anoka County brought her back to supervise for several years where she provided leadership in the area of child protection, intake and investigations. She evaluated and developed policies that were consistent with legal mandates and provided for children's safety. You can continually see the best interest of children noted in Pam's work and that continued when she came to Scott County as a social service supervisor in 1999. In this position, she led and supervised the areas of child protection, minor parent services, foster care licensing and adoption. She effectively led the implementation team for the Family Group Decision Making Program with four other counties. So again, partnering, reaching out, not just the county all of the time. She represented the county on several state committees and was the recipient of the 2003 Excellence in Supervision Award from Scott County. Next in line for Pam was to become the Social Services Manager and Director. She served in this role for about 10 years and was again awarded a Meritorious Service Award for her excellence in supervision and management. Through Pam's leadership, the division undertook a multi-year initiative to change the practice model for children, welfare services in Scott County. I believe Science for Safety was a big part of that effort. Through Pam's leadership, whoops, I'm sorry. This shift was moving us away from investigation and intervention to one focused on partnerships with families, safely preventing out-of-home placements and preserving families, work we continue to do today. The final quote for this award was, quote, "None of this would have been possible without the visionary leadership provided by Pam Selvig," end of quote. The final step in Pam's career was the move to Health and Human Services Director, where I've been lucky enough to work with her for the past seven years. This is the role that Pam has been in the past seven and a half years. During her tenure, there were many accomplishments by the county that have benefited our residents and her leadership played a huge role in just the following sample. The transformation of new options to proact was no easy task and has been seen as a very successful transformation. The creation of the Treatment and Veterans Courts. The construction of the Intensive Residential Treatment Center, or the ERTS as we fondly know it. I remember Mr. Shelton telling me that he told Pam to get out there and get this done because it was going to move forward and it was a need in this community and she certainly did it. Creation of family resource centers, which is an initiative that they were now moving on and moving forward, which again reflects this need to work with families, to reach out before things happen. This proactive, preventive type systems that we're developing. The creation of the Transitional Reentry Homes. The upgrade of the Mental Health Center in the new building. The integration of WIC into public health to try to help the outcomes for our youth. The county campus consolidation and construction project was no easy task for that building over there and to move the whole workforce development center into that building. And perpetually on the last place team at the Choose Not to Use Golf Tournament, but they continually win the best attitude. I think it's a challenge. You can see the commitment and dedication that Pam has to support our most vulnerable that reside in Scott County. She is a fierce advocate for HHS, but beyond the projects and the programs, Pam also worked across lines to meet the bigger county objectives and goals. She even volunteered to be a snowplow driver. One of the items our county should be the most proud of is the ability of our leadership team to work across traditional borders for the overall goals of the county and Pam has helped to create that atmosphere here within our community. Pam, I want to thank you for your 23 and a half years of service to Scott County. We all wish you well in retirement and may there be many golf courses in your travels and don't ever let John win. Similar to Commissioner Beer, Pam passed on a plaque and asked that that amount be given to Treehouse in her retirement name. But we do have a small little certificate that we will award her with here on behalf.
Great. One more. Leslie. Pam, you're
We're not very good at this.
Pam, you're going to spend one minute per year here, right? Okay. Is there someone else who would like to come up and speak? Barb, do I see? Come on up.
All right, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Pam. Suzanne and I are here today supporting or I guess saying a few words on behalf of our directors team. And I have to say, that is no easy task when we try to think of a few words to put behind someone who's shown us great leadership, guidance, and I think we're just going to plain miss. And so not only is it hard for those reasons, but it's also difficult when you have somebody who set a really high bar for how you say goodbye to your boss. If anybody remembers this from Gary Shelton's going away party. So we have a few highlights that we would like to share with you. And first we'll look at this quote here. I'll read it to you because I think it's a little blocked here. So great leaders don't set out to be a leader, they set out to make a difference. It's never about the role, always the goal. So just want to pause for a minute on that word, "goal." As Leslie talked about, when Pam first took on the Health and Human Services Director position, she did so and Judith Brumfield moved into Chris Harder's current position. And we started doing, had kind of a different culture change on how we talk about goals, both with our county board, with each other. And with that, Pam supported that culture change. So we really thought it was only fitting that we developed our very own Pam Selvig career snapshot. So on the left, you will see that we have both logos during Pam's tenure here. We also have an About This Career where she has helped us to envision and support and navigate Health and Human Services for the past 23 years. We also took a look at some data. So we have county population back in 1999, compare that to our current year. And then we looked at the number of FTEs and the number of positions and we took that to the amount of people per 1,000 in the county. And look, she actually like bent the curve on how we're able to support. And so why does this matter? Of course, we know that Pam's career matters a great deal to all of us that have worked within this. We're not entirely sure if this data actually means anything or not. But we, we, we thought Chris Harder could help us figure that out at a later date. Or maybe, maybe this just helps set a backdrop to some of the things that Leslie pointed out too. So I think our county has really seen significant growth. And with that, I think through Pam's leadership, we've seen such an emphasis on partnership. And through that partnership that's happened through many of our nonprofits that are brought to the table and many of these were not here prior to Pam taking over as Health and Human Services Director. You know, in addition to that, I think one of the pieces that helped spark this that Leslie talked about was the county board's strategy on not criminalizing mental illness. And Pam really just did some instrumental work that she had a community impact focus on, really a laser focus on making sure that these outcomes were achieved. And not only, not only that, I think it's interesting when you look at our, our Health and Human Services work, oftentimes it is about transforming the life of someone and we don't often get to cut a ribbon over the work that we do. But we did that with Pam again and again and again and again. And again and again. And so really just creating the space for us to continue to live out the legacy that she gave us. But it wasn't always an easy day in Scott County, was it Suzanne?
All right, so I'm going to pick up at COVID. Who would have ever thought the world would shut down and we'd be dealing with a global pandemic? So Pam certainly led us through the global pandemic and all that that entailed. You'll see the number of healthcare participants increasing, obviously the number of COVID cases and the impact overall to work and workload and staff. She taught us how to use technology to come together. Again, our mental health center unit. What Greg? A little support with IT. One of her greatest achievements is how she modeled work from home. She led us through that front. She also engaged with our public health partners to again, go out into the community, help to organize vaccines, COVID testing, again, all about breaking down silos and engaging with the workforce and engaging with the community. Again, more fun pictures of her out being the superhero. So I'm going to sort of round us out here. As with Leslie, this is hard for me to do. So I've had the opportunity to report to Pam for 18 years. I started when I was 12. So Pam has really been a coach, a mentor, a support to me through my professional development along with many others in this room and beyond. So she, I've grown up in the child welfare field under Pam. And again, the really, the legacy that she has left within the child welfare field much broader than Scott County. And I know Pam really wants this to be funny, but as she probably knows, I'm not very funny, especially in public speaking venues. But what I will say, when I was preparing for, like what do I, what do I say and how do I acknowledge all that she means, certainly to me and my career and to this organization? Found a quote by William Arthur Ward, a motivational writer, who said that leadership is serving, is a serving relationship that has the effect of facilitating human development. And again, Pam's impact on many of us in this organization around her professional development goes unsaid. What distinguishes, I think, you Pam as a leader is your focus on relationships, both relationships with staff and the community and those that we serve. You have epitomized what it means to be a public servant. You have, your decisions have been always thoughtful and laser focused on what is right for the community, what is right for the people that we serve. Period, bottom line. The decision might not be popular, it might have budget impacts. Thanks for the laugh. Thanks for the laugh. Might not be popular decisions, but again, at the end of the day, if it is about serving and serving well to the community, Pam will make the, make the decision. I've had the opportunity to talk with supervisors and staff in preparation for Pam's upcoming retirement, and I just noted some themes that seemed like words that came up repeatedly. First was down to earth, what a down to earth leader she was. Like, of course she is. Her focus on service, her level of support provided to staff, again, and to community. What I can say about Pam is she has routinely talked me off the ledge over the last 23 years, along with many of us. Other words, fantastic boss. How she's changed people's lives for the better. Commissioner Beer, I'm going to pick on you for a minute. You talk a lot about how are we instilling hope and how are we transforming lives? And Pam, you have changed my professional career and many in this organization and the community. The one thing that we were, we are going to miss the most about Pam is her laugh, and I really had good intentions of like trying to follow her around and record it, but I thought that would be creepy. So refrain, but we will just know that we will miss your laugh from down the hall or down the stairway. So one more quote as I finish. Sheryl Sandberg is quoted as saying, "Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence and making sure the impact lasts in your absence." And Pam, you have most certainly accomplished this. We thank you for your leadership and wish you all the best as you start this next chapter. Go on adventures, enjoy time golfing with your family, with your new grandbabies. Although I will say, you probably owe John a few months of being a coffee barista because I've watched him deliver coffee to you for the last few years, so you can maybe pay him back. But mostly I want you to go Pam, being proud of all that you have accomplished because you have left an undeniable legacy in this organization.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to get up and speak?
Mr. Chair? Thank you.
Commissioner Weck.
Yeah, Weckman Breckley, there we go. Pam, I just want to say thank you. I still remember about a month before I got elected, you and I went out to lunch and your facial expressions were, what the heck am I going to do with this chick? But you really, you were so patient with me and answered all the questions, and even though Leslie's job has been in the running lately, you Pam do have the hardest job, the hardest job in this county. So many people, so many programs, so many requirements, so much need, and you did it with grace, and I thank you for all that you've given me throughout this and all that you've given to the people of Scott County. So really excited, really excited to meet my buddy John here, who, you know, you can text me anytime about household hazardous waste and if it's open. And, but just thank you and best wishes for the next parts of your journey.
Thank you. Pam, can you first tell us, who do you have with you today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I have my husband, John. We've been married 41 years. My son, Andrew. My daughter-in-law, Jen. And my daughter is actually online, that is Kayla Peterson. She lives in Milwaukee and couldn't be here today, so she is online as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. And you saw my beautiful little granddaughter, Sophie. She's three. She's not here. Oh, boy. Okay. You're going to have to bear with me, I may have an unusual laugh, but my team also knows I'm a crier, so this is, bear with me here. All right, what can I say? It has been a great run. Scott County has been a wonderful place to work, and I have so much to be thankful for. Judith Brumfield hired me in 1999, and at the time, inflation was 2.19%. A gallon of gas was $1.22. Dave Unmott was the county administrator, and DHS was just rolling out its first software system for social services. Much has changed in those 23-plus years, but unfortunately, the antiquated software systems of the state have not. What has been consistent has been the encouragement and support I have received from the leadership at Scott County. From Judith to Gary, and now Leslie, I have felt listened to, been provided tremendous opportunity, and been supported in carrying out the work of my unit, a department, and now the entire division. It may be surprising to you, but the work of HHS is not always understood or supported by the public or leadership. This has not been my experience. I have appreciated the continued support of the board and of administration in addition to the day-to-day work. Big undertakings such as the transition of new options, the development of the ERTS and Family Resource Centers, and most recently, the expansion of reentry housing, although through much discussion and consternation, have all been supported. For this, I'm thankful to all of you. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the staff in Health and Human Services. I have had an opportunity to work with some of the most talented, dedicated people I know. Many have tough jobs, working with people with significant life challenges. Supervisors in other departments also support this work every day. This is difficult, emotionally demanding work, and we have a great team of people who face these challenges daily, look for ways to improve the lives of those they are working with, and are dedicated to the mission and values of their profession and this organization for this. We should all be thankful. Lastly, I must say I have the best leadership team in the county. I know some of the other division heads may disagree, but my teams, both past and present, have been the greatest part of my journey. The current leadership team in Health and Human Services are some of the best in the state. This team makes me laugh, provides unwavering leadership to their respective departments, and have made Scott County a wonderful place to work. Their support to me is tremendous, and I'm so thankful to have had the opportunity to work with all of you. Finally, I want to thank my husband, John, and family for always supporting me in this tremendous journey. It truly has been a great run. I look forward to this next chapter with more time for family, the grandkids at the cabin, and new adventures with my A-team and golf buddy. I want to thank you all. It has truly been a wonderful experience.
Is there, I don't think there's anybody else who would like to speak, so I don't know if we were going to go to a recess after, so yeah, we're going to have, is there cake instead? Perfect. Perfect timing. It's always a good time to eat, at least for me. We're going to take a recess and then 15 minutes or so here, 20, whatever. So 15, yep. Thank you. We're at nine, and that is to receive a status update and consider action on conditional use permit number 616-C-8 issued to Mid-America Festivals Corporation and adopt resolution number 2022-265. I see Brad Davis up there. Brad, you're up.
All right. Hello, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Brad Davis, Director of Planning and Resource Management. Today, I'm going to provide a status update on this agenda item and present what has occurred since the November 15th public hearing. As you recall, after closing the public hearing back on November 15th, the board voted to table any action on resolution number 2022-265 until today, January 17th. As outlined in your board packet, the request for board action, we outlined some of the steps that have occurred since the public hearing. The permit holder started meeting with county staff about mid-December to start discussions, provide updates on what the proposed changes and improvements are under consideration to address the issues that were raised at the public hearing. These proposed changes and improvements have evolved and expanded over the several weeks, and after we provide some initial feedback, they go back internal, I think huddle, and then come up with some more detailed refinement to some of their proposed changes. On January 9th, the permit holder and the team met with county planning, zoning, environmental health, and highway staff to further discuss proposed changes and improvements. And like all pre-application meetings, the permit holder was informed that no formal action or decisions are going to be made until they formally submit an application to amend and reopen their conditional use permit. And that's what happened on January 13th. The permit holder did submit an application to reopen and amend the conditional use permit, number 616-C-8, to alleviate the concerns that have been raised by the county and address the issues that were discussed at the November 15th public hearing. So in addition to the formal application that has been received, the permit holder has been providing the county since last month periodic status reports, which provide more detail on the proposed changes and improvements. And the most recent status report arrived at the county yesterday. I'll provide a summary of, I think, some of the key or notable proposed changes that have been discussed. I won't go through all of them, but I want to hit the key notable ones. Mid-America Festivals proposing that the event will no longer advertise free parking any further. All patrons will need to purchase a $5 onsite parking voucher at time of purchasing their event ticket, and cars must display this parking voucher on a dashboard when entering the grounds. The permit holder is working with their ticket vendor, which I believe is ETIX, on this onsite parking voucher. The number of these new onsite parking vouchers sold to patrons will be limited for the final three weekends of the festival. For the 2023 festival, that's generally September 16th, 17th, September 23rd and 24th, September 30th, and October 1st. As you'll know, these three final weekends have historically been the highest attended each season. The maximum limit has not yet been determined at this time, but the county's traffic count data for these weekends during the 2022 season and the permit holder's attendance information should inform a limit that would be set on this permit. The permit holder is proposing to expand bus service to bring patrons to the festival from off-site locations. According to the permit holder, the current Minnesota Valley Transit projections for 2023 is that they can transport 36,150 people to the festival grounds. The permit holder has also stated that they're working with Southwest Transit and others to reach a goal of transporting 50,000 people this season. And to put that in context, the average total attendance for the years 2018, 19, skip 2020 due to COVID, '21 and '22 was about 250,000, so that goes about 20% transit ridership for their total attendance. I want to point out at this point in the process, staff has not seen or reviewed any formal letters of understanding, agreements, or contracts with transit providers or bus companies to truly achieve this ridership goal. Other things that they are proposing is using promotions and ticket incentives to limit the number of patrons parking on-site and stagger the arrival times on all dates. They propose open the gates to onsite parking earlier during their festival days. They are proposing measures to improve parking efficiency and the speed of bringing vehicles into the grounds, such as delineating delineating the parking rows, creating new internal rows for buses and additional vehicle stacking, enhancing signage, increasing the number of internal shuttle buses, and hiring a full-time dedicated parking staff. Finally, their application includes incorporating of the properties where the 155th Street Lot and the Green Lot are located into the legal description of their conditional use permit. So that's the outline of some of the things that have been proposed and discussed so far and what's contained in their application and in their most recent status report. Some other general updates for you since the public hearing. The permit holder has informed the county that Mid-America Festivals expects to have a lease in place with Brian Rock Products to continue operating the festival through December 31st, 2026. So that's four more seasons. The permit holder has informed the county that the business council, the Shakopee-Minnewakaton Sioux community, has expressed interest in negotiating a lease with Mid-America Festival to be able to park vehicles on SMSC land similar to the footprint used during the 2022 season. So that would include the Queens Lot, but not the Trail of Terror Lot. On January 12th, a staff member from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources notified the county that the state has become aware of event parking occurring on a portion of their property, and that this is unlawful trespass, and that should cease until the matter is resolved, and the DNR will be taking steps to address this issue. So that concludes my status update of where things stand as of November 15th. We will discuss different options that you have in front of you today, and before we do that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have on this status update or answer any inquiries you have on next steps.
Commissioner Alwreck, microphone. Thank you, and you're next.
I'm wondering about the parking pass, and will it have a location for where the pass is? You're buying a parking pass for where? Will it say where on the parking pass?
To my knowledge, what has been proposed so far is an onsite parking pass, so you would purchase a pass that allows you to park your vehicle on the festival grounds. So there's no other location that that person is being directed with their parking voucher.
Well, that would be something I would probably be looking for in the future, that you buy a parking pass and it tells you where you're going to park.
Okay.
You know, so if they have, say they're going to have off-site parking, person knows they're buying a parking pass for that off-site location, that isn't left a chance. That's something I would be interested in.
Understood, Commissioner. That would be an expectation, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if Jeannie should probably explain the process and what the options are here today in front of the board. Jeannie or Ron, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I want to be clear that we are here today based on the item and resolution that is before you. So you are trying to determine if you are going to take action on this item or if you are again going to table it. Mr. Davis provided information on the status update so that you can determine if there's enough information that you would like to continue this or table it again for this process with the amendment to proceed. We are not here to actually get into or discuss the amendment. All of those things have to come out in the amendment process. So inasmuch as Mr. Davis provided some insight as to what they are proposing, nothing has been finalized. That has to be worked through, through the normal staff processes and brought back. And I think Mr. Davis is prepared to talk about a potential timeline if the board chooses to table this matter again, how that amendment process would proceed, and when they would come back for a public hearing, at which time the board would be able to discuss the different suggestions that they've given, where they see gaps, and potentially have it reviewed and iterated again. But today, we are only trying to determine what we're going to do with this matter, if it is going to be tabled again, or if it is going to be picked up and discussed and determined.
Okay, Commissioner Alwreck.
My, okay, I made some comments, and I'm not trying to be solving the issue here. I'm more or less saying I'd like to see more information on this topic. Will it include? But I'm not suggesting that that's what you got to do, or I'm not trying to solve it, but it is a category of information I would like to receive. but it is a category of information I would like to receive. It's important to me. Is that okay to say it like that?
Right. Mr. Chair Commissioner, it's a fine line, but we just want to be clear what we're doing. We are not making suggestions. We are not talking about that actual application that they've made at this point because it's still in process. We don't know. So to the extent that, you know, you want to know if it already addresses that, so you can make your determination today, yes, you can ask and get that information. As far as saying that's what you want to see, probably not. That's what we want them to iterate and come back with. And then at that public hearing, that's when you talk about what you may not feel is sufficient or where there is a gap.
Okay, take it as my comments from today. Okay?
Okay, Commissioner Walkman-Brecke.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, thank you, Jeannie. That cut down my comments a lot. I just want to understand a little bit because the information that was received yesterday, obviously, that wasn't in the packet. We didn't have that. Some of those things you're talking about with the parking fee and things like that, are they part of the, I think you said they're part of the status update. Are they also part of the proposed amendment, or is that detail not in, I didn't see that in the proposed amendment?
Yeah, Commissioner Walkman-Brecke, Mr. Chair, the actual application to amend the CUP is fairly broad in how they want to address specific situations, and the detail is really in those status updates. And we see it as a companion to the application. And when and if we ever formulate some conditions with on this permit, we'd be taking some of that detail from the status update. So at this point, what you read in the actual application does not provide that detail that I summarized here.
Just to follow up. So to be clear, Friday is when we received the application to amend. So that's what we received Friday, and that's information that helps us decide whether to go forward on this action or not.
That's correct.
Commissioner Beer.
So just further clarity, perhaps beating a dead horse, but so clarity on some terms. So you mentioned there was a proposed lease with Brian Red Rock through '26, so not not executed, not final, just a potential. I don't want to make any assumptions. So there's not a lease. There's not a lease with Brian Red Rock through '26 that's a proposed or possibility.
Commissioner Beer, we are not aware of any final executed lease.
A second point is, I forget the word you used, and words are important. You said SMSC is interested in a lease. I don't know if that was the right term, but like the idea of like, it's not an executed lease, but open to the possibility, but it's not an executed lease, whatever the word was, same same idea.
Commissioner Beer, that is my understanding. There is not a final executed lease with SMSC.
And you mentioned a proposed transit, I don't know if you said transit plan, but proposed transit with MBTA, and why am I forgetting the other one?
Southwest.
Southwest, yeah. Again, same idea. Proposed, they could take X people, but again, just concept at this point, or maybe not even concept, it's an idea.
That's correct, Commissioner Beer. We do not have any formal contracts, agreements, or letters of understanding.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Can I piggyback on it? The DNR, how many spots was that that were being used? Do you know, or?
Commissioner Wolf, I have not counted that. We showed during the public hearing a portion of land in the Queen's Lot that is owned by the DNR, but I have not went back and counted the spaces.
And they may or may not let them use that again if there's an agreement. Is that?
That's my understanding. They said in their correspondence to us that they will address the issue with the permit holders, and so that hasn't been resolved to my knowledge today.
Okay. Commissioner Alrick.
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure how to ask these questions, but I'll try. You said that there's been some discussion about a busing plan of 36 with MBT, 36,000, and up to 50,000, maybe including Southwest. Is that, that's correct, right? If the topic has been discussed like that?
The topic has been discussed that the applicant's ultimate goal is to provide transit for 50,000 patrons.
All right. But you haven't seen any specific busing plan?
Commissioner, no, we have not received any specific contracts or agreements
Okay.
that demonstrate the plan will be executed.
That's just all I ask.
And that 50,000 would be over how many weekends? Four or five?
Commissioner Wolf, I believe it's for the entire season. So I think it's eight, is it eight weekends?
Seven weekends, seven. Yep, okay. Okay, Commissioner Brennan, you can turn your mic on.
I have a question for the attorneys. Is there a limited number of times that the this can be tabled, or it can be tabled as many times as the commission feels that it's necessary?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, no, there's no limit. It's just a matter of what we want to do. There are some timelines with regards to the amendment that we need to be aware of for what we're doing, but there is no limit.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner?
Again, a question for legal counsel, and I'm worried, or how much risk do we take if the ultimate decision is revocation at the closer that we get to the festival?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, that absolutely is one of the concerns. I think right now staff feels comfortable with recommending that we do table this one more time, or at least one more time, to allow the amendment process to proceed a bit further. That is definitely a concern, though, that we would be compressing timelines and getting closer and closer to the next event. So if the Board is not convinced that there's been enough action with the amendment that's going to take care of it, that would be a basis today to take up the revocation action and make a determination if we don't think that this is moving in a proper process.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just one more question. Brad, I'm just a little concerned we didn't receive this amendment application until Friday, January thirteenth. Any, I just want to know if you have any comment on that as far as the discussion and the working, if I shouldn't be as concerned, should be concerned, you know, any more comment to add to that timeline?
Sure, Commissioner Walkman-Brecke. You know, through the holidays, we talked a lot about the process and getting information, and it wasn't until January ninth that we could schedule a larger meeting with staff rather than just individual discussions to really get a comprehensive look at what they're proposing. And I informed the applicants at that time that on February ninth, you would get some feedback that would allow you then to submit your application. So it wasn't out of the ordinary for them to then turn that application around later that week and submit it by the thirteenth.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just one more.
Oh, yep, Commissioner.
Obviously, we have concerns on our end about, you know, recontinuing this and and tabling and so forth. That we did get a letter, it's part of, going to be part of the record from someone about this topic, but they're from the other side of the equation. I think they were, I think they were a vendor. They're concerned about them knowing, you know, what their future is going to look like based on, you know, whether we table this, or whether we act, or, you know, delay is not the friend of this person that wrote this letter. They they want to know if they've got a, their future has some certainty to it. So I think that's an issue as too. I just wanted to point that out. You have that letter, I think.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Alrick, it won't be part of the record today because this item was on the agenda. You all did receive it and read it. We will enter it into the record at the next board meeting following your board operating rules.
Okay.
That's it. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
What was the question, Commissioner Wolf?
No, are you, do you have any more to go with here?
I can spell out the next steps of the amendment process if that's something that the Board is interested in.
Yep, okay.
We did receive that application on Friday, so then we'll follow a fairly typical process for any amended conditional use permit. The only difference in this process is we recommend taking the public hearing in front of you at the county board rather than going to the Planning Commission, given the fact that it's been the county board that's really been involved throughout this entire matter. But what we would do is send out the application and the latest status update to both internal and external, internal staff and external agencies. So in this case, we would provide the Department of Transportation, DNR, Louisville Township with all of the application material and give them time to review it. We would ask that Louisville Township provide a recommendation on the amendment at their February ninth meeting, and I've talked to the township and the staff about that date, so they're aware of that. We would then publish the public hearing in the newspapers and mail it out to the quarter-mile radius 10 days prior to the hearing, and staff is recommending the public hearing be held on February 21st. So just about a month from now, in front of this board, hold that public hearing, and then the Board could take action on that amendment, either your February 21st meeting or your March 7th meeting. But staff is recommending some decision by March 7th.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments or motion?
No, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody understands. If the amendment to the CUP comes before us on February 21st, and, you know, let's say this board decides, yay, good amendment, vote for it, and then if the revocation's still on the table, we take action, don't take action. If we do the opposite, though, and we do not approve, because we don't know what would happen, do not approve the amendment, the CUP as it exists now remains in place unless it's revoked.
Commissioner Walkman-Brecke, that is very correct.
Just want to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. What do we want? Do we want to vote on it, table it? What's the Board's pleasure?
It's appropriate to just have some discussion.
Sure, absolutely. Go ahead.
I mean, what I would say is, this is a, this is a big deal. It's been a lot of concerns. It, as, as I think we've stated publicly before, we hate to patrol and shut down businesses, but we just have so many concerns here. So I, I am very torn at this because I've heard from most of these people in the room some many times and a lot of other people, and a lot of what's happened the last couple of days has been, sounds like good progress, but I, I think that's what we need to discuss, if it's enough, if, how do we feel about not having a final decision for a month? The risks of that, the risk to the festival, to the vendors. So I would just say I'm, I'm kind of torn about, about what we're going to do today.
Okay, and it's a good problem to have. If you're the, you know, if you're a business, you are doing very well. But on the other hand, and I heard from people in the audience today that, you know, that's, it's causing them some of their business because they can't get their customers in and out. So, you know, and also I've heard from them, they want something that's measurable, right? I mean, that's, you know, not, we're going to limit something to, you know, whatever tickets. I think there has to be numbers on some of that stuff. I mean, we have to hear a number. We'll limit it. Well, is that limited to, and I don't want to say words, but anyhow, that's what I heard loud and clear. And so, and if people want to come up here on the seventh and speak for the, you know, at the open mic on the seventh, they could come speak for the Renaissance or say, you know, here's the problem we have with some of it. So, because that would be, if it's not on the agenda, they could do with that. So anyhow, with that, any other comments? Commissioner Beer?
We can discuss hopes, right?
Yep.
What are hopes?
Yeah.
So I had hoped there would be more concrete, you know, as opposed to proposed. There'd be some, hey, here's X, Y, Z, here's one, two, three. You know, we saw those videos, we saw the pictures, like, of all the streets. I, I want to get, what I saw in those cars was like four huge turkey legs parked on all these streets. Like, get those cars in and, and.
Make them turkey legs.
Get, get some money in there, and, and everyone else gets to have their life, too. Their birthday parties, their furniture repair, their corn maze, their Bobcat stuff. So there's, we got a, I too am a little apprehensive of kicking this thing down the road too far because it's kind of been kicked over the years for lots of different reasons. We want businesses to succeed. So I'm apprehensive, but I think another tabling makes, well, I'll just leave it at that. Tabling at a time and try to get.
That's it.
Yep, I think that's where I'm at.
Till the 21st of February, right?
Yeah, or.
Staff is recommending a public hearing on February 21st.
You're recommending February 21st, so you're recommending table this until the 21st. Is that what I heard?
Staff is recommending March 7th. That gives you one more board meeting after the 21st.
Okay, it's the 21st, we can't decide.
Okay. Commissioner Walkman-Brecke.
Thank you. As the amendment moves through and it goes to Minda and Louisville Township and all these other places, I would imagine all these places might have some comments, concerns, things like that. Remind us of the process if we get to the 21st, and we hear, and again, I'm just worried about timing on this, too. We get to the 21st, and there's all these comments, and we're voting on the amendment as presented. My recollection for things like that is we can add, can we add conditions during that time that maybe are not in the amendment at that, as proposed?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, adding things gets a little bit difficult. You can kind of refine things and do that. We cannot add unilateral conditions. The other option that you would have after having a public hearing is that if you think that there are still large gaps, you can have staff take it back and refine and work through some of the concerns that you have and see if something can be resolved and come back again. So again, we don't want to get into this position where we table things and table things and table things, but after a public hearing on an amendment, you could table it for a week, two weeks, something like that, to let staff go back and work with the applicant to refine things if you have concerns. That's probably a better alternative than simply imposing conditions, although, yes, you can impose some conditions that are, like I said, kind of being a little more specificity and those sorts of things to what they have proposed.
Okay, thank you. That, that was my fear because of the vagueness of what's been proposed. Are we just going to be at the same place again?
Mm-hmm. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Well, I'm okay with tabling this to the 21st with the understanding that March 7th is really the drop dead date, that we are going to act on March 7th.
I agree with that. Yep. That was a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion.
A second.
And there is a second. Is there any further discussion? Further discussion. Okay, we're going to vote. All those in favor say aye to tabling it to the 21st, correct? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that will be three weeks from today, and we could, oh, I mean, the 21st. Oh, okay, yeah, okay. Yep, wow, okay, that's right. All right, yep, sorry about that. So we are going to move on to committee reports and commissioner updates. Commissioner Brennan.
Okay. I want to thank the staff for meeting with me this last month. I think I've met with majority of the different departments, and they've been very open to telling me about what they're doing. Let's see, I also attended the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District Meeting that was held on January 10th, and the Board reviewed potential plans for wetland improvements near Buck Lake. The primary goal is to clean the water, and the secondary goal is to mitigate flooding. The Board approved the Scott County Aquatic Invasive Speedy Seas Plan that we approved at our last commission meeting. Scott County Historical Society meeting was on January something 11th. The Board discussed their budget. And on Friday, I attended the scale meeting, and I had a meeting with our county administrator. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Walkman-Brecke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. January 4th, I attended the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce Session Priorities Event. Several of our legislative delegation was there, folks from Shakopee Chamber of Commerce, from the SMSC. from the SMSC, just to hear about legislative priorities from the governor and leaders in both, both caucuses of the legislature. January 5th, we had a, an AMC virtual joint meeting of the Public Safety and Health and Human Services Committee to talk about mental health, the unfunded mandates that are really coming to counties and to plan for the legislative session about trying to change some of that trajectory. January 6th was the Scale Executive Committee Monthly Meeting. January 9th, Leslie and I had our quarterly meeting with the mayor and city administrator of Belle Plaine, met the new mayor, Michael Walitz, just good introduction, be able to talk to him a little bit about the relationship between Belle Plaine and the county. And it was good also to see him later that week at the Scale General Meeting. Also, on January 9th, Leslie and I met with the mayor and city administrator of Jordan. Topics really had to do with our transportation projects on 169 in and surrounding Jordan. January 10th, met with Caitlin Judd regarding a status update on Together We Can. It was a very positive meeting to really hear about the progress that group has been made, you know, the goal there is to end child abuse and neglect in Scott County, which sometimes you just think, how, how can that happen? But some really good progress with fatherhood groups, with parenting resources for, for mothers and fathers who are struggling. And, and so it was really good to get that update. January 10th, monthly meeting with Leslie, county administrator. January 11th, the MICA Monthly Board Meeting. It was the annual meeting for MICA, so there were the elections where Stan Kurwowski of Washington County was elected the new president. Otherwise, it was really just a focus on legislative priorities. January 12th was the Highway 169 Corridor Coalition Meeting. Next week, on Wednesday, that coalition will be at the Capitol, have a meet and greet with legislators to talk about Highway 169. Bills have been introduced in both the House and Senate to get some more state funding for those projects, so we're hoping to be talking with folks about that. January 13th was the Scale General Membership Meeting. I will say, I was very impressed with the timing of that meeting, having three very important topics and getting them all done, and getting done in time. That was good. Yesterday morning, January 16th, I met with Commissioner Brennan, just to, to be able to talk about things and offer my support, and talk about some of our liaisons. And then this morning, I had a meeting with Commissioner Beer, and in my report to you, Tracy, it said Beard. That's a mistake. Beer. Guess I haven't forgotten about that guy yet. Otherwise, the last two weeks, a lot of phone conversations with folks about the Ren Fest, about the County Road 42 Transformational House, and also with Perry and other folks about our legislative priorities, with everything moving a little faster there for the beginning, at least. I mean, I don't know if the work's gonna get done faster, but introductions and subjects and hearings are going pretty fast. There's been a lot of conversations on that. That is the end of my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Beer?
Thank you very much. On the 3rd, I attended the Shakopee Swearing In Ceremony, where they had a new city councilor. Delaney was sworn in, Contreras was sworn in for, I think, her second term, I'm looking down, second. And then Mayor Matt Lehman was sworn in as well, so wanted to be in attendance for that. On the 4th, Prior Lake City Council, they normally have it on a Monday, but with New Year's, had a Prior Lake Work Session and City Council. The Work Session had one agenda item, and it was the 42 House. And so they worked through that for an hour or so, and were all in receipt of the letter that was the outcome of that session. There was talk of, do they do a resolution, they being the city? Do they do a letter? Do they do some, you know, some sort of lawsuit if there, if there's one warranted? And so we got the letter. There was also some discussion, sort of in the Work Session, that carried into the City Council with, they had their, I'll call them the fill-in attorney, their regular attorney was out, alluding to some sort of vagueness, some information requests from our council. And so I caught him, the fill-in council or attorney, I said, what is it exactly that you're looking for? Because I'm, like, our county attorney's office, like, gets the information people need, so I'm like, something's not right here. So I think we got that ironed out. I texted Leslie right away, and so I think whatever that was that they were needing, we got that into their hands, the, the legal team over there. So that, hopefully, because I'm just trying to eliminate all these vague items that somehow turn into something more than they are. So, but I will say, going back to the letter, the city is expecting a response to that letter. So we need to be working on that. Moving on to the 6th, I attended the retirement dinner for, or party, however you want to call it, for Chief Frazier. Just like we saw today with Pam, that was a life well-lived with, with Chief Frazier, which is obviously ongoing. But his career, it was at Fong's, the place was packed. Rank and file, people from past works were there, family, of course, and, and some of the current constituents and colleagues. So it was, it was fun to be, be a part of that and represent. On the 10th, Fish Program Committee. Also on the 10th, is that, I think that's right, I gotta check my date, monthly administrator meeting. 13th, this is talked about with Scale. And 17th, also did have a breakfast. How do I, see, what name do I come up with? Ah, Commissioner Wackman-Brecke. Always trying to just stay connected. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Ulrich?
Okay, on the 5th, I'm here with the management bylaws, and we need to say, appointed, elected, and hired, and staff, participating as full members of the executive committee jurisdiction. We've had appointed people, we've had...
Elected people. So, so only do amend the executive committee agenda there, or bylaws. The 9th, the Management Committee for MBTA, we just really selected the leadership for the Management Committee, and also for the board. I'm the treasurer secretary again. And 11th, the meeting with Kevin Burkhart about House on 42. 12th, the meeting with the Savage Mayor Administrator and Leslie Vermillion. Fish, the second Thursday meeting. Back on the Fish Board this year, and also back on the Fish Executive Committee, I had a year off on both. 13th, the Scale Regular General Meeting. I did feel, you know, I was feeling a little less positive about the meeting, in that I had to realize that the presentation from Three Rivers was really the meeting host presentation, which was supposed to be five, 10 minutes, and they lived within that, I think. But I, I wish we wouldn't have had them do that, and wish they would have done a more full-blown presentation with pictures and a little more to it. So it kind of, I hope they'll come back at some point and do a much fuller, but they, that wasn't their slot. That wasn't what they were supposed to do. Okay, then, the one I want to comment on the most was, after that, was the RTF meeting regarding the study. There's been a pretty exhaustive study in the RTF, and it's a reentry training facility. And I think we had the probably expectation that we'd get this study, and then we'd know for certain what we're gonna do next, that there would be crystal clear. The options, they had three options listed. One of them wasn't listed. One of them was to shut the whole thing down. They didn't, they didn't even include that as a possibility. And I don't think anybody really wants to include that as a possibility, but that, that would theoretically be one. One was keep a status quo, just kind of, and the status quo, I will tell you, is disappointing to me. We have had a status quo for quite a number of years. And what it is, status quo is a Band-Aid type approach, being very frugal, not spending additional money. What that has meant, we've fallen out of competitiveness with other training facilities. Many of our, our technology is outdated. Some of it isn't even usable anymore. Some of it can't even be fired up. There's a driving simulator that's sitting in one room, and they can't even turn it on anymore. So it's like, and not saying they need a new driving simulator, but, so the, the facility in terms of its freshness and its technology, it's really fallen behind. And that, that's been status quo, and that, that can't be in my, that, we, we really need to advance beyond that. Then, one of them would be bridging to something else, you know, doing a few minor things. And the something else would be a facility somewhere else. And the discussion, or some thoughts that were expressed there, well, you know, Burnsville Fire just built a new fire station and shiny new facility in Burnsville, and it was $30 million. So you have to ask, well, what would a new training center somewhere else cost, whether that's really a reality? The other is an updated facility, you know, updating the technology, freshening up everything, bringing it up to speed so it is fully competitive with other training facilities in the area, in the region. And by the way, the concept of, well, okay, if there's all these other in the training centers in the area, why don't we just go there? They're booked, they're full. It's not an option for our people to go to these other facilities, because they don't have time for them. So, so that's not really an option. So what's happened is, there's gonna be a, a technical committee formed to go through deeper depth on the study, and then come back with really some specific things for us to interact with in terms of the overall direction, you know, whether it's status quo, whether it's bridging or updating the facility, one of those. That's one thing they're gonna do. The other thing is, they're actually racing to get us a package of the obvious, the very obvious things that need immediate fixing, technology and so forth. They're gonna actually try and put that in a package for bonding requests for this session. So the technical committee is gonna work quickly on the very obvious, these need right now, kind of proposals. And we'll have to, we'll have to ask ourselves, well, does that, is this the right time for that? Does that compete with, you know, our Merriam-Junction Trail request, you know? We've got an $11 million request there, you know? So if you ask for something over here, does that, does it take away? If you ask for $3 million, and they say, well, we'll give you the three, but we're not giving you, you know, we don't know that. So we're gonna have to have that kind of internal discussion of what is the right timing. But that's, that's kind of probably more than you wanted to know, but that's the end of my report.
Go ahead.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Ulrich. For my report on the 3rd, Credit River had their swearing in, and New Market Township had their monthly meeting. I went up to give a small report, a short report, like I normally do, and it turned into a half an hour of grilling about the water plant. And so, but I think after, you know, talking to people and telling them some of the things, I, I think a lot of them are a little more comfortable of what's going on out there. I hope so, because that would be a great addition to that city, and I think it would really boost the economy out there. So, then Prior Lake had their workshop and meeting. On the 4th, was mostly reentry, you know, in the workshop and in the swearing in, it's like Commissioner Beer had mentioned. On the 9th, Planning and Zoning Met, there's a couple of things going on, coming in out here. One, it's a small item, at the end, was the helicopter permit, which we've dealt with here in the last couple of years. They have to come in every year to just see, how did they do, and whatever. They were 20 or 30 flights under what they could, they're allowed to do. And also, so instead of it coming to the Planning and Zoning to every year, to whatever it's gonna be handled administratively unless it gets out of hand, but, yep, I think flying helicopters is not cheap. So, I don't know how much money people have, but it's still, it's, it's not cheap. And on the 11th, the MESP met, their first meeting of the year. On the 12th, I-35 Solutions, we talked about some of our legislative priorities. Next month, this is a heads up, some people want to come to that, we're gonna talk about the bridge on I-35 and 2 out there that goes through Scott County, and when and how that can get fixed up and to help out with the traffic problems. As it turns out, some of the semis that come, you know, from outside the cities, they might have got to the cities or whatever, to their destination a little quick, so they either come up the ramp on, to go on the 2, or go down that ramp after 2, and they park there for hours and sleep, because that's a free place to stop and park, and it's easy for them to, you know, get on. Residents out there aren't quite thrilled with that. So anyhow. Then Alcoa New Market met that evening. There was some open comment about the, the water plant out there, and they're still waiting. The biggest holdup right now is the DNR has not said whether or not it's a big deal. Most of the people I've talked to said that, the DNR will probably approve that, so. And then Spring Lake Township met, and they kind of quiet out there, just a couple of things. They talked about McManay Lake a little bit, and what's hopefully gonna happen there. And then the Scale Meeting on the 13th, which was mentioned. So that's my report. County Administrator Update, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just have one reminder, we do have the Parks Work Session with the Board on the Regional Master Plan next door following this meeting.
Thank you. And is there a reason to adjourn for county attorney?
We do not.
You do not? Okay. With that, as Leslie said, there is a workshop after this to talk about the Regional Trail Master Plan update. And with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn. There's a motion by Commissioner Beer, and there's a second by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.